Not approve the implementing ordinance. The state law will stay in effect. The city will have to comply with it. And the city will have to comply with the existing density bonus ordinance that it has on the books. And the reason why planning is bringing this to you is so that the city's codes can be made consistent with the state law and so that there are procedures and there are no inconsistencies. Otherwise, you still have to comply with the state law. You still have to give these density bonuses.
Saying it's about what sort of housing we build, Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti presents his perspective on the issue of what state Senate Bill 1818 will and will not do.
We're not going to save a single building from getting demolished by not implementing 1818. So I want to underscore again, no matter what happens with this, the importance, and we're certainly hearing this from our friends and the communities, the neighborhood associations, neighborhood councils, also from our affordable housing preservationists, that we've got to do something about those demolitions. What this does is if something does get demolished, it inserts some affordable units in what gets built. If we don't pass 1818, zero units get built that are affordable in what replaces or gets demolished. And I want to say that again because I think we're mixing apples and oranges sometimes. There's no prohibition from people knocking down rent stabilized apartments right now and building something new. The current law, they don't have to do anything affordable. This law adds at least some affordable units, which is not going to solve the housing crisis, but for those 10 families or whoever, those are 10 more Angelinos who don't have to contribute to traffic, who can live in a neighborhood, et cetera. That's point number one. Number two, I appreciate the picture that Mr. Rosendahl, that you showed us. That picture that right now, there's no protection next to an R1 zone for building something like that. The way we have written this now would be a protection. If we implement, if we fail to implement, there's no protection. Implementing with that exact picture actually protects that home right next to it from that monstrosity not happening again. And that's also an important clarification because when we keep saying 1818 is going to make more of these, this is happening without the 1818 today. Neighborhoods need to know that, communities need to know that. And precisely because we're as appalled in our own neighborhoods with things like that happening, we changed the law that was drafted by the planning department to prohibit that. So I don't want us to say that 1818 is going to produce that. It's different. And it actually helps what you have said that you want, and I know that you want as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All right, now, we are prepared to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
All right.
Now, because the vote was not unanimous this time, it was continued one week to February 20th, when 10 votes will be needed to pass the density bonus program. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling 213-978-1046, or of course, by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 15th, 2008. On behalf of Chris Kalman and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move along with, because of, and in spite of the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2008. We are Los Angeles City Council, and we meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, except for the first Friday of each month in which we meet at Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring city council meetings closer to all Angelinos. We welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and those who are watching us via webcast on lacity.org. We're also available through your telephone using the council phone service at 213-621-CITY, which gives you audio proceedings of our city council meetings and any of our committee meetings as well. We have four council members currently here, myself, Council President Eric Garcetti, we have Council Member Richard Alakon, Council Member Tony Cardenas, and Council Member Dennis Zine. We are awaiting 10 members to constitute a quorum, and according to city council rules, council members should be here on time, present at 10:00 a.m. It's now five minutes past that hour. Council Member Gruel, if you will please join us. Council Member Labange, if you will join us. Council Member Parks. Council Member Perry. Council Member Reyes. Council Member Rosendahl. Council Member Smith. Council Member Weiss. And Council Member Wesson. Mr. Weezer is excused today, and Ms. Hahn is excused to arrive at 10:30. But otherwise, we are expecting all council members, so we are waiting six more in order to begin this meeting. We have our city council agendas available online and also in person at the city clerk's office. Those are available 72 hours in advance for our special meetings, 24 hours in advance. And you can always fill out a public speaker card if you'd like to give your public testimony on any of the items that are before us. All items receive either a testimony, a public hearing in committee or in the full council. There's also time for general public comment for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the State's Round Act. With that, again, we want to reiterate the call for council members to come down and join us. Council Member Gruel, we are waiting for you. Council Member Parks, we are waiting for you. Council Member Perry. Council Member Reyes. Council Member Rosendahl. Council Member Smith. Council Member Weiss. And Council Member Wesson. We've been joined by Mr. Labange. Thank you. That takes us to five members, and we appreciate everybody's patience. Ms. Gruel is here as well. And as soon as we have 10 members, we will begin the meeting. Thank you.
You're waiting one more council member. Thank you to Council Members Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Labange, Parks, Perry, Weiss, and Zine, who are all here. We are still awaiting Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson, if you will please join us, and we will begin our meeting. We're waiting one more council member. This is our third quorum call for Council Member Reyes, Council Member Rosendahl, Council Member Smith, and Council Member Wesson. If you'll please join us as soon as possible. We're waiting one of your presence here to begin the meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Labange seconds without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Weiss seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
All right. Mr. Reyes, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise with the right hand of your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Item one is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 3, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application. However, there is a card on that item.
Okay, we'll call that special for a card from the public. Next items, please.
Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 8, there are three reports on file, and a motion is required.
Okay. Are those in conflict?
I do believe they conflict one another.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead? We'll call that, I'll call that special. Any other specials 2 through 7, colleagues? 2 through 7, Mr. Alakon?
Next.
Oh, another one? Mr. Parks?
I want to move the budget and finance report for number 8.
Number 8, okay. I will still keep that special, but we will move the budget and finance report without objection on that.
Is there any staff here for item 2?
I'm not sure.
Any staff here for item 2?
It doesn't seem like there are. Would you like to call it special, Mr. Labange?
Talk to staff, though.
Okay.
Because one day, I'd like to see a subway stop there.
Okay, we'll, if you want to have them come talk to you? Or you want to call it, okay. But not call it special?
Staff.
Okay, we'll make sure you get.
Planning Department staff could report to Council Chamber, John Ferraro Chambers.
We'll hold that on the table anyway for 12 members as an ordinance. 3 through 7, colleagues? Any 3 through 7 specials?
No, no, no.
If not, let's go ahead and take the balance. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please. Fourth with without objection on number 5. Next items?
Items 9 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We have cards on 11, and we have cards on 14. So we'll call those a special. Are there specials?
1718 special and could.
Sorry, 1718, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, we'll merge them.
Okay. We'll call this special for Mr. Parks, Mr. Alakon?
Item 20, I wanted to call it special for the purpose of sending it to committee.
Okay. Item number 20, Mr. Alakon moves to send that to committee. All right. So if there's no objection, we'll send that to committee and get that report back like three weeks or something? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. No objection, then we'll do that.
Item 22?
Mr. President?
22, Mr. Alakon as well. Okay.
Mr. President, what committee was?
To education neighborhoods. Mr. Parks?
Just make a friendly amendment on item 23.
Okay.
That we add merely that our city clerk be involved to ensure that whatever the lessons learned can be incorporated into the city's election process.
Okay, I'm going to call that one special, too. We'll add that, certainly, city clerk to be included. So 23, I will call special. Any other specials, colleagues? We'll open and close the public hearings on the remainder. 22 has been called specially. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 25 through 31 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, and these are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, so let's hold those on the desk. We're still awaiting Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson to give us 12 members if they could please make their way down as soon as possible. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 41 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 37, there is no action required inasmuch as council adopted this matter at last Wednesday's meeting.
Okay.
Special.
Colleagues, any specials? Mr. Alakon?
I'd like to continue item 35 until the 29th of February.
Okay. Any objection, colleagues? February 29th for 35? Seeing none, so ordered. Mr. Parks?
41 special.
31, okay, yeah, that's been held. 31's been held. We're on 32 through 41. Any other specials, colleagues? Oh, 41, okay. I'm sorry. If not, let's go ahead then and take the balance. Please open the roll, except for 32. Oh, we got some, yeah, public hearings have been held on this, please. So besides 32 and 41, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved.
Alexander House.
38, we will send forthwith without objection. Okay. Next items, please.
Items 42 through 62 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We have cards on 11, and we have cards on 14. So we'll call those a special. Are there specials?
1718 special and could.
Sorry, 1718, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, we'll merge them.
Okay. We'll call this special for Mr. Parks, Mr. Alakon?
Item 20, I wanted to call it special for the purpose of sending it to committee.
Okay. Item number 20, Mr. Alakon moves to send that to committee. All right. So if there's no objection, we'll send that to committee and get that report back like three weeks or something? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. No objection, then we'll do that.
Item 22?
Mr. President?
22, Mr. Alakon as well. Okay.
Mr. President, what committee was?
To education neighborhoods. Mr. Parks?
Just make a friendly amendment on item 23.
Okay.
That we add merely that our city clerk be involved to ensure that whatever the lessons learned can be incorporated into the city's election process.
Okay, I'm going to call that one special, too. We'll add that, certainly, city clerk to be included. So 23, I will call special. Any other specials, colleagues? We'll open and close the public hearings on the remainder. 22 has been called specially. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 25 through 31 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, and these are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, so let's hold those on the desk. We're still awaiting Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson to give us 12 members if they could please make their way down as soon as possible. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 41 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 37, there is no action required inasmuch as council adopted this matter at last Wednesday's meeting.
Okay.
Special.
Colleagues, any specials? Mr. Alakon?
I'd like to continue item 35 until the 29th of February.
Okay. Any objection, colleagues? February 29th for 35? Seeing none, so ordered. Mr. Parks?
41 special.
31, okay, yeah, that's been held. 31's been held. We're on 32 through 41. Any other specials, colleagues? Oh, 41, okay. I'm sorry. If not, let's go ahead then and take the balance. Please open the roll, except for 32. Oh, we got some, yeah, public hearings have been held on this, please. So besides 32 and 41, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved.
Alexander House.
38, we will send forthwith without objection. Okay. Next items, please.
Items 42 through 62 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none, we reached the threshold of 10 votes for consideration. If we can now take any special items? Do we have cards on any of those, Mr. Clerk?
I see cards on 56 and 61.
I see 52 as well.
52.
56, and what was the other one, sorry?
62.
62. And we have 57.
Excuse me, Mr. President, that was 61, actually.
Okay, 61. So just to review, we have 52, 56, 57, and 61. Do we have any other cards? Looks, I think we're good. Any specials, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
51 after the vote.
Okay. Any specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Rosendahl?
I have 40.
Which one?
40.
Okay, when we get back, we'll do that after we go through these. Any specials 42 through 62, colleagues? 42 through 62? If not, let's take up the balance then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Without objection, we'll send 51 forthwith. If we could reconsider number 40 for Mr. Rosendahl? Please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. If we can take up the ordinances we held on the desk for 12 members, that's 25 through Please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, the fourth with number 60, please.
Six zero?
Yeah.
Okay. Without objection, we'll send 60 forthwith. Any other?
And, Mr. President, just for the record, Ms. Hahn was here, so it'll be 13 ayes on the last vote.
Okay. Make sure she gets recorded on that. With that, is that the agenda?
That would take council back to public comment.
Okay, we'll take public comment now. Want to thank our members of the public that are here. Sky Anderson will be our first speaker. If I can ask folks to please direct their attention. And we will next hear from Robert Vega after Mr. Anderson. Good morning, Mr. Anderson. If you'd like to come forward, you're first, sir.
I'm Sky Anderson. I've been a citizen of Los Angeles for eight years, and first I want to compliment some remarkable public services. Mr. Labange is taking up the Hollywood sign issue. I was just in his office saying anything I can do to help restore, preserve the Hollywood sign in all of its integrity. I'd be glad to do that. Mr. Labange is truly a public servant who cares about what happened to the city of Los Angeles and Hollywood. I want to thank Police Chief Broughton because he's reduced crime significantly in our area. I live in this Skid Row Hotel, because it's a little on Social Security, and prior to Mr. Broughton, we had drug dealers operating openly all over Skid Row. We had prostitution. We had people shooting up heroin. We had crack pipes everywhere, and all that's been eliminated because Mr. Broughton is the police chief. I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for Hollywood. He's, Hollywood has been reborn since he's been the representative of Hollywood, and now we have a problem of excess. The entertainers in Hollywood and Highland are being harassed by the police department. The police department tells them they need, can't have signs, they can't have money in their hand because that tells people they're in it for the money. Most of these people do this for free, and they accept donations, but the police department is curtailing these people's First Amendment right of freedom of speech. I think Mr. Broughton should know about this because I don't think he wants his department to get the reputation of being Nazi-oriented. Anyway, Mr. Garcetti, I'm asking you to talk to Mr. Broughton and ask him to stop this abuse of power by the police department on Hollywood and Highland. Two, the problem is a problem of excess. It's so successful, here's a, I got off the internet, and they're talking about how when you go to Hollywood and Highland, you'll find, you'll find impersonators, you'll find entertainers who work for tips. It's a problem of success, and some of these people who are impersonators and entertainers demand to get paid, and that's not what it's about. The police department needs to be there but not enforce unconstitutional laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Robert Vega is our next speaker. After that will be Father Mario Torres.
Good morning, President. Can Father Mario speak before myself?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Father Mario Torres. I'm the pastor, secretary of our church in Lincoln Heights. I'm here with religious and other community members to present to the city council more than 1,000 signatures from concerned residents in Lincoln Heights who do not want alcohol sold next to our schools as part of La Villa's development. The Carmelite Sisters and I met with Council Member Reyes, and he made it clear he supports an alcohol-veering video arcade. We respectfully disagreed. Just a few weeks ago, in these very chambers, Council Member Reyes, who represents our community concerns, are rightly saying that there are already too many places that sell alcohol in Lincoln Heights. He cited the high rate of crime and gang activity, negative impact of alcohol sale near schools and churches. He in this council denied a liquor license on those same points to a local neighborhood grocery store half a mile from La Villa's. But now the zoning administrator has bypassed a pre-existing city ordinance prohibiting the sale of alcohol within 500 feet of a school or religious institution by approving a beer and wine license for La Villa's, which will be immediately next to three schools, a convent, and a church. We do not understand why this law does not apply to the developers of La Villa's. They are presenting this project as a family entertainment center. We agree that such a project should be built but without an alcohol and arcade permit. We support economic development but at the cost, but not at the cost of our children's safety and education. We ask our council member and the entire city council to stand with the people of Lincoln Heights in our appeal to the zoning, city zoning commission on February 27th, to follow the law that the city has already established to protect our children and not allow La Villa's to sell any type of alcohol near our schools, and to not allow the permit for the video arcade that would just promote truancy and be a magnet for more gang activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
And all of you received a copy?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Robert Vega is our next speaker. After Mr. Vega will be Sister Rena Feren.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I am here with a concern, as you heard, Father, that selling liquor close to the schools is our concern. The project itself, I'm 90, I would say 90% of that, I approve of the project. I do believe in development in our community. We need it. We need the jobs. But, you know, you're calling it a family entertainment center. I think families can do without the alcohol. You know, you want children there, you want it to be a family environment, and I think without the alcohol would do. I'd just like to show you the proximity, where exactly what we're talking about is, this would be the proposed site for the project. This is a preschool here, which is, a gate separates the property from the project. You have Lincoln High School, which is right across the street from the project. You have Gates Elementary School, which is right in front of the project. And you have a Buddhist temple here, right next to it. And you also have a, the convent here, which houses the sisters from Little Flower Missionary School. So I believe in development. I believe that we need these types of projects in our school, in our community, but we don't need the alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sister Rena Feren. After that is Hugo Pacheco.
Good morning, City Council President, Councilman Reyes, City Councilmembers. I'm also in favor of our economic development in Lincoln Heights. I live in Lincoln Heights and I work in Lincoln Heights. But I'm mainly speaking as an educator of over forty years. I can't predict the future, but in my experience of working mainly with adolescents, if there is a choice between study and play, they usually opt for play. And the presence of the video games especially is a concern. It is, as Mr. Vega mentioned, it's right across the street from one of the seventeen L.A. Unified School District high priority high schools. And I think it would be a big distraction to the students there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am for the project, though. A family restaurant would be great.
Thank you, Sister. Hugo Pacheco is our next speaker. After that will be Sal Vidalri? Excuse me, Vidalri, excuse me.
Yes, my name is Hugo Pacheco, and I've been a resident of Lincoln Heights for over thirty-five years. What really gets to me is the fact that I read recently that in South L.A., the Neighborhood Council there was decertified. And I believe that the Neighborhood Council in Lincoln Heights should be decertified as well. Knowing full well that we were going to discuss this particular issue at our forthcoming meeting on Thursday, they decided to cancel. Let me read the memo to you. It says, "Due to the number of work, family, and other commitments, many members of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council cannot attend the February twenty-first council meeting. For this reason, we are guaranteed not to have quorum, guaranteed not to have quorum, and will cancel this meeting." Folks, this is an abuse of power. In two thousand and six, they were supposed to have an election. In two thousand and seven, they were supposed to have an election. We're in two thousand and eight, and once again, we're told that it will not happen until the end of the year. This is just a way to keep the people from being able to speak up for their rights. Thank you.
Sal Vidalri? Excuse me if I'm mispronouncing it, Salvadari? Here? Not, Matt Dowd is our next speaker? Matt Dowd? After that is Juan Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you, Matt Dowd, Channel Thirty-Five again, just giving you the Venice Beach update. That's how we know we won now. We won because it's in the paper, because the councilmen said to us, "We're not going to change that unless you sue." So we sued in federal court, and here it is in the Argonaut, February fourteen, Valentine's Day gift to Matt Dowd, revised ordinance regulating vending on Venice Beach. But now the city of Los Angeles doesn't want to pay the damages. So we're taking the Bernie Parks route, and we're going to a jury to award us damages. So they'll tell you how much to pay, and whatever they give up, we'll say, "Thank you very much, but don't do it again." And that's the punitive part. Thank you for the punitive, don't do it again. But wait, there's a new ordinance. Now, I read a comment in the Daily News last February fifteen. Jack Weiss was quoted in the Daily News. He said, "I know the First Amendment better than anyone." February, no, January fifteen, two thousand and seven. So if he's going to run for city attorney, please get him in there, quick, because at least he could help Bill Rosendahl out with this whole Venice Beach thing. But you know what? We were right. He was wrong. That's why I said it was a dumb comment to make. And I think, Mr. City Attorney, I'm allowed to say that. It's a dumb comment to say when you're part of a group that voted for something that was unconstitutionally vague, and we proved it off the street. I've also got White versus the City of Norwalk here, and it says, "Public comment is reasonable as long as the time is reasonable, and they're implemented without consideration of the content of the speaker's comments."
Your time is up, but we appreciate your comments this morning. Juan Jimenez will be our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Juan Jimenez. I'm going to say something on this issue. Hypocrites are playing both, from both ends, because two wrongs does not make it right. The church is saying it is wrong for Las Vegas to be located nearby a school and church, right? If this is so, then there are great concerns and of importance to the community that tells me, "Why does the church sell alcohol beverages at their events or fundraisers?" I could care less who sells from this group, or whatever, any group. Now, if the church never sold any kind of alcohol beverages, then I would say yeah to their protest. But in this case, it is a double standard practice and plenty of wrong being said. The church and schools are right there on the property, regardless if it is one or twice a year, it is wrong. Being there is a church and a school or a school nearby. If one says black is white, would you believe it? No, because black is black and white is white. It is wrong to use God's church and the property of church to sell anything for a church in the place of worship. I care less if it is outside the church, if it is still the property of God, if it is purchased under the registration of the church. Our government and some religions are upside down due to double standards, and this is why we face so many problems since people fallen out of not obeying the law, two laws. Number one law, the laws of God. Number two, the laws of government. Read the Holy Bible, and it will tell you what I am saying here. How many more sins must we do before the wrath of God hits us?
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Appreciate your comments today. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Sister Vincent Marie.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I'm reading from a copy of, I don't know, The City Beat. The mayor took the bus last week, or a week ago. Can you believe it? How many councilmembers have ridden a bus in the last two weeks? Congratulations, thank you, Mr. Councilman Smith. But what was really interesting is the fact that he said, he spoke to these two chil- these two young girls who are on the bus, who have to commute for ninety minutes in the morning and any afternoon from their homes to go to school. They're up at five AM to get to school by eight-thirty. So this refers back to the fact that the city is in a deficit fiasco right now, and it's been asked by the ma- the mayor's asked for cuts. And one of the cuts he asked for was elimination of vehicles for staff members. If kids can get up at eight, at five AM to go to school and be there by nine o'clock, how come the staff members of the City Council can't get up that early to come to work? In addition, it would serve two purposes. First, it would eliminate the use of city-owned vehicles, plus it would give the public an ear and an eye to what exactly happens on MTA transportation, and maybe some changes, real changes, for the public's benefit would occur because the people who are riding it happen to work in government. In addition, a couple of weeks ago, there was a problem here on a Friday, Friday morning during presentations. I'd like to ask the council to consider the fact that since Friday spend, they spend three hours approximately on Fridays with presentations, then they should have their staff not show up until eleven o'clock. The mayor has asked for five days or ten days voluntary time off. If the City Council staff showed up from, instead of at eight o'clock, they showed up at eleven, fifty-two days a week, fifty-two times a year, that would save almost ten days of time. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your answers.
Thank you very much. Sister Vincent Marie is our next speaker. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys to Donna Perman. Good morning, Sister.
Good morning, members of the council. I come before you this morning to speak on behalf of the Carmelite Sisters, who are residents that directly abut the property of Las Vegas and on behalf of Little Flower Missionary Preschool. We care for one hundred and fifteen preschoolers on a daily basis. We live in and serve, we have lived in and served the residents of Lincoln Heights for sixty-five years, both as an educational facility and as a religious house where persons may come to be spiritually refreshed in our chapel, which is open to the public seven days a week for worship. We are directly across the street from both Lincoln High School, Gates Elementary. These three schools house over three thousand students, Monday through Friday, and the high school also functions after hours on the weekends. As residents and educators, our main concern is the environment and safety of over three thousand students who attend our schools. Having over sixty-five years' experience in education and childcare and in that neighborhood, we do not consider an establishment serving beer and wine and having one hundred video arcade games appropriate in such close proximity to the schools. The students walk by the location on their way to and from school, and it is well-known that the sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages usually results in a negative impact on neighborhoods for a variety of reasons that are well-known to all of us. We already have an oversaturation of alcohol licenses in our area and permanent gang injunctions against three of the five gangs in our area. Given this fact, there is a strong potential for increased gang activity and crime in that location. Let me make it clear, we are not in opposition to the project per se or the economic development of Lincoln Heights, but our opposition is to the location. It is totally inappropriate, in our view, according to the already existing zone ordinances, to have alcohol arcades located adjacent to the three schools and two religious houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sister. Donna Perman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back here from Michael Carrion.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a complaint to Cardeney's office that they don't have the agendas here, and they always go to Sun Valley every Tuesday, and why not they go on, why don't they go on Monday? They, as I said, agendas are not here, and yesterday's still a holiday, so I couldn't see agendas, so it's going to be hard for me to speak. Also, I don't feel it's right that you got paid for Friday. It should be community service. If you want the city employees to take off five days, you can take off five days for a community service. It's fine to go to a funeral for such a fine man, but certainly you need, don't need to get paid. And Miriam is sorry she couldn't be here because she had a child that she had to take care of, the, the school was off. There should be a German for those poor students that got murdered. It makes me mad when the murderers give an equal time with poor innocent people who are listening to a lecture. They should only talk about good innocent people so their memory goes on. When they give coverage to murderers and cry for them on TV, they encourage other people to murder and become infamous. I like to tell people who murder multiple people for no reason, you will have your punishment in the hellfire. Doesn't matter if you had a bad childhood, got teased as a child, unsure of your sexuality. He had no mercy for his victims, and God will have no mercy for him. He has no right to have guns if he had feelings of murderous rage. Guns should be used for self-protection only. If someone there was able to carry, these people might be alive today. They made them in pictures with people, they, they put them in pictures with people they murder, insult to the victims and their families and friends. We need a safer place for our children. My best friend Miriam's girl will go to college. Why is it easier for criminals to gun guns? Guns aren't the problem, people are. I starting to believe in the Second Amendment, and I believe that, okay, we need to go after the murderers and strong punishment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that will be Walter Bechtel.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I also am here to speak on the ViaVia program. Excuse me, can I speak? We've got a lot of people talking over here. Number one, I'd like to know where all these variances come from. A building of such size needs so much parking, but ViaVia gets acceptance. Number two, they get another acceptance because they can build from the curb wherever they want. Number three, someone mentioned earlier that the church had a law about selling liquor. This is not a church law. This is a city law. This is a law or a code or enforcement or whatever you want to call it that you put in place, not us. You said liquor could not be sold within so much from a school. You guys put this in place, or your predecessors, not us. All we are doing is asking you to uphold these policies that you put in place, not pick and choose the ones you want to uphold, and then give this guy a break and give that guy a break for a liquor license, not in front of one school, not in front of two, but in front of three schools. And then the mom and pop who wants to open a store down the block, whose property was taken by eminent domain, your city took it, wouldn't give him a liquor license because of the violence, the drugs, everything else. They apply to this person. I don't know where you guys grew up, but Mr. Rosendahl made it clear, sweetheart deals. This is the sweetest deal of all that I've seen so far since I've been here. It is so sweet that I have to question it. Where are, is there kickbacks coming? Is somebody, why is, why are people on board on this? I don't understand. You have schools here, and you're going to give them a liquor license. You want to talk about hypocrisy? There it is.
Mr. Bechtel is our next speaker, Walter Bechtel.
Hello. I wanted to follow up about what I told you I was going to talk to you about, or I was talking, went over to HUD concerning the purchase of the Ford Hotel at one thousand and two East Seventh Street. It's council file number oh seven three eight nine nine. They say in their document there was supposed to be a community, a cup meeting prior to your decision-making process. There was no cup meeting, there was no community unit for participation meeting. They told me they canceled the meeting. They had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. You people signed us into action on the twenty-third. Okay, number one. Number two, I find that you guys are violating the federal regulations here. Twenty-four CFR Section five seventy point two oh eight, the criteria for national objective. It says, A, it says that the objectives, the, the activities that, that you propose with this loan that you're going to get from HUD are not to benefit moderate income persons to the exclusion of low-income persons. Every there, everybody over there at the Ford Hotel is below the poverty level, and you're supposed to use a census tract to determine this. You're going to convert this thing into a hundred and fifty units with bathrooms and kitchenettes, and you know as well as I do, the rent is going to be something like a thousand dollars a month. That's all illegal. So I've been talking to the Fed on this, and I'm going to continue to do that despite the fact that the, the community unit for participation unit, meetings are continually being canceled.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. That will close our general public comment. Mr. Reyes, I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and, first of all, thank everyone that's here today. I respect, and I am honored by the way this is being conducted. Your tenor, your friendliness, your respectfulness is very much appreciated. I just wanted to share with you that unlike shaky's, Chuck E. Cheese's, that's the extent in which we would be offering, and it's restricting the conditions, beer and wine with food. That's it. So I look forward to working with you, I grow up in the area, I want what's best for the community as well, we just agree to disagree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Like to, this time, recognize Patrick Verone, our friend from Writers Guild of America. Colleagues, I think we all celebrated in the good news of the resolution of the writer's strike, and I want to thank Mr. Wesson and a number of the councilmembers who spent a good amount of time focused on this to ensure that we continue to keep that light shine on the strike. But with that, Mr. Verone, always a pleasure to see you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all the councilmembers for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Patrick Verone, president of the Writers Guild of America West. As you are well aware, the Writers Guild ended our one-hundred-day strike against the major media conglomerates last week. Thank you. Thank you for that smattering. The strike was immensely painful to our industry and to the economy of the Southland. All of our members appreciate the serious effect it had on hundreds of thousands of our fellow Los Angelinos. We hope that our employers also recognize the weight and effect of this strike. We all know now that seven diversified multinational conglomerates fight like hell. Who knew? But as, as resolute and united as these companies were, our members were more so by a thousandfold. And for writers, the results of this struggle are palpable. This contract is the best deal this guild has bargained for in thirty years after the most successful strike this guild has waged in thirty-five. It was arguably the most successful strike in the American labor movement in a decade, certainly the most important of this young century. It is not all that we hope for and is not all we deserve, but as we've said from the beginning, this strike was about the future, and this deal assures for us and for future generations of writers and for all members of the Hollywood talent community a share in the future. We entered this negotiation with three goals. The first was jurisdiction in new media. We achieved that goal with an agreement that says that any new media content written by a professional writer or spun off from existing guild-covered programming is covered. Our second goal was reuse in new media. We achieved that goal with an agreement that ultimately bases all royalties and residuals on a percentage of distributors' gross. When they get paid, we get paid. Our third goal was one which we did not achieve, namely the shoring up of their, our existing coverage in the entertainment talent labor pool through the expansion of our jurisdiction in animation and reality television and other genres where writers create content but do not receive the benefits that we expect and they deserve. I want to thank the members of this council for all you have done to help support the writers and our cause. We especially want to thank President Garcetti for his leadership during our struggle. During one of the most difficult times during this strike, when the conglomerates refused to bargain with us, Council President Garcetti brought to the forefront the importance of settling this strike, and we are grateful for his efforts. We also want to thank councilmembers Labonge, Ruhl, and Rosendahl for their consistent support. We should also thank Mr. Wesson for sponsoring a hearing on the economic impact of our strike on the city of Los Angeles, which helped bring hundreds of writers into City Hall. For many writers, this hearing was the first time they've entered into this building. Now that they have the address, perhaps they'll come back. Each of you played an important part, and we want to thank you for those efforts. While this contract will likely be ratified soon, we do not see this ratification as the end of our struggle. Very soon, the screen- Very soon, the Screen Actors Guild will head down the same trail we blazed with their support. We wish them the best of luck and we offer them our support and expertise. We encourage you to do the same. We look forward to continued efforts to strengthen our guild, to build our alliance with the other guilds and unions in this town, to make our presence felt in Washington, in Sacramento, here in City Hall, and be ready to make further gains in our next round of bargaining with the media conglomerates three years from now. That struggle begins now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Verone, and thank you to the entire guild and their great work. We hope to see writers here many more times and expect to see many more series based on City Hall, based on that experience. So we might have The Wire out there, which I know Mr. Wesson is a fan of, but we're looking for LA series too.
Have any spec scripts you want me to read? Bring them on, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you, appreciate it very much and congratulations again. With that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wesson as well for a special presentation today to our council general and a special delegation from Korea.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. In this country, we are going through an election cycle, but it's important for us to remember that there are other countries throughout this world that are friends of ours. So I'm honored to be joined today by representatives from our Koreatown area that are going to represent us, the city of Los Angeles, at the swearing-in, which is February 23rd of the new President of Korea, President Lee. Some of us had an opportunity to meet him when he was visiting the great city of Los Angeles. So with me today are my dear friend, Council General Choi. Let's give Council General Choi a round of applause. And I have two friends of 20 years, both of them doctors and both of them have the same last name. So I have tall Dr. Kim and my height Dr. Kim. Give them a round of applause. And other dignitaries from Koreatown. But what we'd like to do is to present to the council general a congratulatory proclamation signed by every member of the Los Angeles City Council to commemorate the election of the Honorable President Lee. Boom, boom. They are going to be leaving. I think Dr. Kim is going to be leaving today and Jean will be leaving, I think, on Thursday and that's why I wanted to take a few minutes today. So I'm very appreciative, as I'm sure they are as well. Thank you.
Happy to make the accommodation and thank you all very much and safe travels to you and our best wishes to the new president-elect. If we can take up item number two now, we have enough members, please open the roll on two, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. If we can go to the items called special. First item, please.
Item one was called special, four cards from the public.
Okay, Lee Ambers, if you'd like to come forward on item number one, this is in council district three.
Honorable President and council members, my name is Lee Ambers. I'm here on behalf of Valley Produce and support the application for public necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zahn.
Mr. Ambers, before you leave, one idea that we've come up with to help remove the shopping carts from the area is that there be a barrier and they have these magnetic barriers, the shopping carts aren't removed. One of the conditions we're now requiring with the ABC, with the alcohol dispense, is that the shopping carts not be removed from the property since we have a tremendous problem in our city. So if you can advise Valley Produce to that, some installation of some barrier so that carts cannot be removed past the property line. And that will impact positively on the community and we will move forward with the approval. And I know you have to go for a conditional use permit, but before that point, if you can have that transmitted to the owner, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I will share that with my client and I will also address it at the public hearing for the conditional use.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zahn. Move approval with that. If we can open the roll on number one, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. If we can skip past, oh, actually eight, we had a movement, we had a motion to move the budget and finance report, so I think that's fine. Let's go.
Yes, Mr. President, I would request that item number nine on the report was left off for some reason. That was to instruct LADWP, LAWA, and the proprietary departments to be added to the task force on environmental preferred purchasing. So I had moved amendment to include instruction number nine, which was in the original report and not in the budget and finance report.
Okay, we'll move that, accept that as a friendly amendment and I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, for you and your staff's work on making sure that everything the city buys is from an environmentally preferred purchasing policy. It's a very important policy that we pass here today, even if it's not with much discussion, it will be very impactful. So with that, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
We did, but it had a public hearing. Did you want to reopen? Jane Paul, do you want to come forward real quick and we'll reopen it? We just voted, but why don't you congratulate us instead? Because I assume you're forward. Tell us why this is good.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name is Jane Paul. I'm speaking on behalf of Green LA. Green LA is Los Angeles' leading environmental coalition comprised of more than 60 environmental and environmental justice organizations. Green LA salutes the work of the Environmental Affairs Department, the General Services Department, and the Bureau of Sanitation in creating the environmentally preferable purchasing policy. We strongly support the policy and believe that the city has a powerful impact through their purchasing methods on the quality of life for Los Angeles' communities. The policy will be most effective with the commitment to the principles of preventing all harm, counting all costs in the supply chain, and including the community in its process. By participation in the task force, experts in environmentally preferable purchasing, public health, and environmental issues can inform the city on best practices and clear goals with research and an ongoing dialogue of cooperation. Importantly, we believe that the task force participants should be without financial interest. Additionally, this policy creates opportunities for the growth of safe and clean new markets in Los Angeles. Once again, we applaud the city's leadership in reducing the negative impacts of climate change, supporting the interdependence of environmental issues and economic progress, and ensuring justice and sustainability. We look forward to continuing our collaboration. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you to Green LA for their help and assistance and we hope to inspire other employers and companies to follow suit with environmental purchasing policies throughout the city. With that, if we can move to item number 11, please. And we have cards from the public on that. Elektra Kruger, if you'd like to come first forward after. Elektra will be Matt Dowd. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Elektra Kruger and I'm the president of the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. The city of Los Angeles does have a rather substantial equine population and this is one that does require an ongoing recognition of and handling of very many and very varied equine issues. They are not issues that can be dealt with properly on a crisis-instituted local ad hoc equine committees, but does require the oversight of an ongoing citywide equine advisory task force. A task force that could have, for example, recognized the imminent crisis of lost manure disposal services when such services closed down to only one such commercial enterprise still in business. A task force could have recognized the imminent danger of it too closing down and the need to evaluate alternate manure disposal options and would have been able to do so in a non-crisis atmosphere such as was recently encountered. There are many equine issues in the city of Los Angeles, such as the updating of the equestrian trail master plan, the creation and maintenance of trails in our regional parks, avoiding the continual loss of horsekeeping properties to high-density developments in our foothills where such developments do not even belong, and dealing with cases of animal neglect or abuse. A task force whose only interest is addressing equine-related issues can well serve to bring to the attention of the affected council district offices and the city as a whole, a voice that can be respected and heard. The Shadow Hills Property Owners Association does urge the city council to seriously consider establishing such a citywide equine task force. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Mr. Dowd? Do not see him here. Arnold Sacks.
Morning, thank you again. This is kind of legislation I couldn't miss commenting on. I believe that all the nay votes should be counted for this item. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks, with that, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, for that humor this morning. I'm not sure everyone caught that, but we appreciate it. Colleagues, and thank you, Elektra, for being here and many others who emailed me about this particular issue in setting up the horse advisory task force. Consistently, both, you know, Mr. Smith and Mr. Alakon and I, and even Mr. LeBange has some horse owners in that area, we have numerous issues that come up, some that are systematic problems, whether it be having homes next to and taking away some of the rights of the existing horse owners to the fact of ensuring that the permit fees go into trails. And there's a number of issues that come up, as Elektra mentioned, that we think are so important. And, you know, this current discussion talked about the manure issue recently. All of those are things that we believe a task force would be, I think, a way in which to ensure that we have the right people in the room and that we're also not just being reactive, but proactive. I had previously put forward motions to look at some specific issues and I think that we have a forum now in which to deal with some of those. The horse owners who have met with me, and I'm sure as mentioned today, on their own, many of them went to actually license horses all over the city because when you looked at the number of licensed horses, it was very, very small, I think less than 1,000. And since they went out and did this, we actually now have close to 2,000 individuals who have gone in and got permits for their horses. It's very important. This task force will come back to this body with the recommendations on a requirements on how we could move forward with a community-based board. I heard from a number of people who wanted to make sure there was community representation. This internal task force is going to come back with recommendations on how we have an advisory board, very similar to like the bicycle advisory board in the city of Los Angeles. And so I want to guarantee to the public out there that there will be community members and potentially it will be us representing or recommending individuals who will serve on that task force to ensure that we're dealing with the equestrian issues across the city of Los Angeles and to be able to keep that lifestyle for many of which have chosen to live in the districts I mentioned earlier. So I just thank Mr. Alakon, seconded this motion, and others. This is a way to institutionalize our efforts to keep this, you know, equestrian lifestyle here in the city of Los Angeles. So I would ask for an aye vote, Mr. Sacks, today, not a nay vote.
There you have it. Mr. Smith is our next speaker. After that is Mr. Alakon.
Well, I think, I just want to echo what Ms. Gruel said and thank you for introducing this motion. I was happy to be a seconder. We have had an ongoing debate and truly one of the things that helped my predecessor retire was the horsekeeping issues in the 12th district helping make that decision, I think. These are the kind of things, we need a citywide debate from those areas that have the horsekeeping in them on the issues because we've kind of approached them independently over the years in trying to fix in our own districts these issues independently. We need a citywide vision for those districts that rim the valley particularly that have horsekeeping. So I'm very pleased to go forward with this, look forward to working with it as we go forward protecting a very unique lifestyle that's disappearing in Los Angeles and that we want to preserve. So thank you, Wendy, for bringing it forward and I look forward to working with you and making it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Alakon.
I too am pleased to second this motion and encourage the city to get more involved in solving equestrian issues. There was an issue that just came up in my district and Ms. Gruel's district relative to manure hauling, where a private business that used to haul the manure away went out of business and left literally tons and tons of manure in these ranches throughout our districts because it was very costly to haul. We are working with sanitation. We have set up some temporary relief at Lopez Canyon and we're hoping to resolve it. But that's exactly the kind of issue that this horse advisory task force can deal with on a broader scale. And there is a marriage between the horse community and the non-horse community because in the case of the manure, for example, the use at Lopez Canyon is to turn it into fertilizer, which can be used for everybody, by everybody, and in a positive way to green the city. So this is, albeit it may appear to be a small step, I think it can have, over the long run, a tremendous impact on how we manage this important element of Los Angeles. My grandfather was a teamster before they were trucks in the San Fernando Valley. He used to literally plow the fields of the San Fernando Valley with horses and that's an element that is being forgotten. The San Fernando Valley Fair, might as well throw this one in there too, the San Fernando Valley Fair just moved out of the San Fernando Valley to Santa Clarita. In fact, it's not even in the 51st district where it's supposed to be. And we need for people to have a better understanding for the, not just horse-related uses, but agricultural-related uses in the San Fernando Valley so that we can have a better understanding and so that our planning folks will have a better opportunity. Obviously, some of our horse owners are not licensing their horses and they're not registering their horses, so our planning department doesn't recognize their existence and sometimes we push out equestrian uses when in fact they're contributing greatly to our community. So this is a good opportunity for us to keep a focus on all of these issues and I commend Wendy for her leadership on this issue and commit to continuing to work with her so we can resolve the problems in our areas up in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. And galloping in is our last speaker, Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much. Any public speaker cards, Mr. President?
There was one submitted by Mr. Ed, but I believe that that was handed directly from Mr. LeBange.
Very good job. All right, thank you very much.
I do not see him out there in the chambers.
Hey, I wanted to ask just a question on this here. Is there staff here in the chambers to discuss this at all? Will be representatives of recreational parks on this? Representatives of sanitation on this? Representative planning on it? Represent animal services? Well, I think Mr. Alakon reminded the importance of sanitation on that and I know that was a very big issue when we said it. So do that there. And also several of the corral groups do have advisory groups, as it is now. Lynn Brown, I don't think you've known, and I think you received an award, Ms. Gruel, right there at the Equestrian Center some years ago by one of the groups. So to make sure we include them all. And I do believe we should make sure everybody pays their licenses because it goes into, right directly into the improvement of equestrian trails. And also I'm going to be discussing this with Glendale and Burbank Horses, which use Griffith Park, and ask them that they have a license as well. It's a small fee, I think of $25 or less for this and it goes a long way to improve it. $14, $14. Should we double it just to make it even, round number? All right, thank you, Mr. President. They should discuss it. Thank you, Mrs. Ed. Thank you, Frances, and all the others.
Thank you. There's only one Mr. Ed on this council, but Mr. Zahn is our last speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel, on this matter, my district has some horses, some of the areas. We're going to have council districts that have horses within their districts have representatives on this so we can spread it throughout the city for different issues.
What this internal task force is supposed to do is come back with a recommended structure that will include representation and that may be one of the things, is they say those, you know, particularly districts that have equestrians in them, which is more than you would think. I mean, it may be that we have all 15, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel, and thank you for your work on this. I know Outwater Village will be very excited to see this and I think the closest horses to downtown live in Echo Park. There's still three of them there. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks, the nays did not have it. That passes. So with that, we'll go to the next item.
Item 14 was called special for cards from the public and amended motion 14a has been circulated.
We have cards on this one, item 14. We're going to start with Cam Noltermeyer. After that will be Marlee Laufer.
Cam Noltermeyer, representing the Santa Clarita Organization for Planning and the Environment, thank you for the opportunity to support the motion proposed by Councilman Alakon. Scope has submitted numerous comment letters on New Hall Ranch and the First Phase Landmark Village. We support the motion to review the environmental reports and potential opposition letters. There are 27... There are 27,495 new residential units pending approval in the Los Angeles County Santa Clarita region. Landmarked Villages, 1,752 residential units recently approved by the County of Los Angeles Department of Regional Planning is included in that number. The balance of the New Hall Ranch, 20,000-plus homes are not. These numbers are from the January 15, 2008 City of Santa Clarita Planning Commission County Development Overview. We support the City of Los Angeles in being proactive in examining land development located outside the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Marlee Lauffer is next. After that will be Teresa, excuse me, if I can't quite read it, Savierli.
Good morning, Council President and Council Members. My name is Marlee Lauffer, and I'm Senior Vice President of New Hall Land, the Community Planners of Valencia and New Hall Ranch. We have become aware of Councilman Alarcon's motion and its references to New Hall Ranch, and we would like to suggest that perhaps this may be premature, and we would like to offer the opportunity to sit down with appropriate staff and fully brief the appropriate folks on our environmental impact report and the New Hall Ranch community. As many of you know, New Hall Ranch is located in the northern portion of unincorporated Los Angeles County within the Santa Clarita Valley. New Hall Ranch is about 40 miles north of downtown Los Angeles. The New Hall Ranch specific plan was approved nearly five years ago by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, culminating more than a decade of community outreach, public hearings, governmental reviews, and of course, court reviews. Our first village, which will start the implementation of the New Hall Ranch specific plan, is called Landmark Village. It's been in public review for well over a year. Landmark Village is about 13 miles from LA's most northern boundary. It's expected that Landmark Village will be before the Board of Supervisors, not in February as indicated, but most likely in May. At New Hall Land, we're very proud of the communities we have built, and we've worked very diligently over the years with all of our neighbors to address their concerns so that we can create a community that's balanced. New Hall Ranch will create about 20,000 homes at its completion, probably a 20-year build-out, and about 20,000 permanent jobs that will complement the nearly 100,000 jobs that will be in Valencia at its build-out. Over one-half of New Hall Ranch's 12,000 acres, over 6,000 acres, will be dedicated permanent open space, and will be managed in a JPA which includes the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Again, we would be more than happy to sit down and brief staff, provide information, our environmental impact reports, and an overview of the new community at any time appropriate. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. Thank you.
Teresa, is it Savierli? Sorry.
That's okay. Everybody does that.
What is it?
Sveiki. My name is Teresa Sveiki. I'm the Santa Clara River Alliance Coordinator. The Santa Clara River Alliance includes Audubon, California, San Fernando Valley Audubon, Ventura Audubon, Los Angeles Audubon. In addition, the Center for Biological Diversity is a member of that group, Hilda Bay, and Friends of the Santa Clara River. We oppose this project for some of the most obvious reasons. Los Angeles City is taking concrete out of the LA River. It's costing hundreds of millions of dollars to do that. And while New Hall can call buried bank stabilization some fabulous, bank stabilization project, it isn't fabulous. But I think your concern should be really traffic. If nobody cares about Biota or the last living river in Southern California, house 357,000 daily traffic trips on the roads and freeway systems. More than 50% of those people will need to leave the Santa Clarita Valley for employment, traveling to the San Fernando Valley and into the Los Angeles region for employment to support their mortgages. This is documented with the City of Santa Clarita's letter to the County, to Los Angeles County. Having 357,000 traffic trips, traveling further distances to and from work, will also impact, contrary to what New Hall Land states, will impact our air quality, obviously, each person driving further distances to and from work. I have with me documents and letters that were submitted by various environmental organizations regarding climate change, Biota, and water, which we also want to be looking at. Everybody's, you know, looking at the drought. Do we really want to get all the water for new development, or do we first want to secure water for the people that live in this county, of which I have, by the way, for my whole life? I don't need to go into the amount of years. Thank you.
Just a couple, don't worry. Jeanne Pollak Recht is next.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeanne Pollak Recht, and I'm here to represent the San Fernando Valley Audubon Our main function is to educate children in the public on the importance of natural areas and habitat, to give them an understanding of what wildlife means to their lives. Our wild areas are shrinking rapidly. In fact, as Ms. Sveiki just mentioned, the concrete lining of the LA Rivers is being removed to protect one of the last remaining rivers in our area. We support Councilman Alarcon's motion to preserve the area around the Santa Clara River. Once the habitat is gone, it's gone, and the wildlife with it, and the opportunity for educating children in the public is gone as well. Places where they go for recreation, to learn something about science, and to give people pleasure in general. So we do support Councilmember Alarcon's motion, because we think this is an effort to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and then Mr. Smith.
Members, this action is necessary, because I think the city has dropped the ball, in many cases, on some projects that are outside of our jurisdiction, but nevertheless impact the people that live in Los Angeles greatly. This project of 21,000 homes will impact particularly the 5 freeway, because nobody in their right mind can believe that the people who would have jobs, who live in those homes, would not be driving primarily to Los Angeles to find those jobs. The congestion on the 5 at the Silmar Junction is congested every morning, every work morning, and even on some weekends, and it's impossible to understand how the county could approve this. I can tell you that Supervisor Yaroslavsky did oppose this as far back as 2003, and I think his intent is largely what I'm trying to capture here. And that is that without creating jobs, you can't just create rampant housing. We've all heard about jobs-housing balance. Well, this is the largest imbalance that I have seen in my time as an elected official. And so I would ask that we do a number of things. Because time is of the essence, the County Board of Supervisors will consider this on February 25, and the timing of the original motion is not conducive to that meeting. So I would ask that we be a little more aggressive on this, because we have to make a broader statement. And that is, first of all, I would like to verbally amend the original motion, specifically the third mover, and have the appropriate departments report to council with letters on February 22, as opposed to 26, as indicated in the original motion. And secondly, I'd like to move per Rule 14a, I'm sorry, I would like to move 14a, which is a resolution which actually takes an opposed position to this project, and allows the departments in their reporting back to actually concur with the city policy or resolution to be opposed to this project. The city, now, there's a broader issue here, and I think Mr. Reyes can appreciate this. We have enough work to do in the city of Los Angeles, but the fact is that this one slipped by without any comment from the City of Los Angeles at any level. I don't know what happened at Department of Planning, I don't know what happened at Department of Transportation, I don't know if Environmental Affairs even received a notice. But it seems to me that not just on this project, but we have to have a process, we have to have some kind of review, and perhaps Mr. Reyes can help guide us in this way, of other projects that are being considered throughout the region that are going to impact Los Angeles, and I think our departments need to be held accountable to that level of understanding. So today, this is a motion to try to get us to focus more on projects outside of our jurisdiction that impact us, and take a strong position, even though it may be too late, quite frankly, but I think we should make the statement nonetheless. And then, the broader challenge would be to get our departments to figure out ways to ensure that we are not negatively impacted by projects such as this in the future. Given that the transportation issues are largely controlled by the MTA, it seems to me that we can still impose mitigations on this project, even if it is approved by the county, as time goes on, but only if we have a very tight and effective strategic agenda and alliances are built relative to regional governance, or we are going to be devastated by this project over the next several decades. So with that, I urge your support. I want to thank Councilman Smith and Councilman Cardenas, because they also will be the recipients of all this traffic, and they understand very easily, without much analysis, how devastating this could be. So with that, I would urge your support for 14 and 14a.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Along with this, there's another project, Las Lomas, which is another project that's going to impact the San Fernando Valley. And it doesn't matter if you're on the 405, or the 5, or the 10, it doesn't matter where you are, this whole concept of building additional homes that people flow into Los Angeles. And until we come to the realization with Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, and their plan to develop thousands of residential units in this six-county region, we're not going to be able to address the traffic concerns. Mr. Parks, Mr. Smith, and I attend regularly the SCAG meetings, where we discuss issues of transportation, issues of housing, and Councilmember Hahn, I'm sorry, Jess. And the problem is, SCAG mandates these housing demands. They're taking six counties, and while the land's available in the North County and the Eastern Region Riverside, San Bernardino, you look at any of the freeways, seven days a week, and they are jammed. It doesn't matter if it's coming in from Malibu on the 10, or south on the 405, they're all jammed. Highway 14 coming in from Santa Clarita is jammed. There are too many people, not enough roadways. We have a roadway condition that is not kept up to pace, and that's a serious problem that we have to address. So I support Mr. Alarcon in this endeavor, and I appreciate the council members who are with me, who were able to block the Amundson 3,600 home project adjacent to my district in Ventura County, were able to block that. And Governor Gray Davis at the time found Prop 50 money and purchased it, and it's now parkland, which will always remain in its natural state. Maybe that's a solution. But I can vision down the road, when we're old and gray, that from San Diego to San Francisco, there'll be nothing but gridlock on the state of California on Highway 5 and all the other roadways that lead into this region. So I support you, but I think we need to take it to another step with SCAG, and have 15 council members, that we have a lot of votes at SCAG, and if we were to all stand up and scream and holler and yell down there, maybe they come to their senses and decide not to build these thousands of thousands of homes, which everyone keeps coming in, they keep on saying they'll be closer to work. They're not going to be closer to work. We're all going to be more inconvenienced and spend more time in traffic. So Richard, again, thank you for your vision, and I hope we can make some success with this, because I'm as frustrated in traffic as everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. We can take the next two items together, please.
Items 17 and 18 were called special by Councilmember Parks.
We have two public speaker cards. Mr. Parks, would you like me to have them come forward?
Yes, is that Dora Fortune in Irma Hill?
Yeah. If you'd like to come forward.
That's on item 18. If we can ask the grandmother, Dora Fortune, and the godmother, Irma Hill, to come up, that's on item 18, dealing with Jeremy Solomon.
Good morning. If you'd like to address us right there, thank you very much for being down here.
Good morning. I'm Dora Fortune, Jeremy Solomon's grandmother, and I'm pleading with you, with them to help us in any way they can in finding this person, because he was a good Christian young man. He harmed no one. He was a joy to the family. He was attending West Los Angeles College. He wanted to be an artist, and he was doing real good in those things. He wasn't a person that ran the street or anything like that. He loved his family, and he loved to dance. He was a Christian young man. He danced at his church. I'm not allowed, I guess, to give the name of the church, but I'm just pleading, pleading, please, to help us find this person that hurt him. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Ms. Hill, would you like to make some comments?
Well, I think she summed it up. He was, as I said, a Christian young man. He was an obedient child. He was helpful in any way that he could to anyone in the community. He was very faithful to his church, very, very faithful. And as a godmother, if he needed transportation or wherever, he would always call me. I never turned him down. I guess I would say in the wrong place at the wrong time, but we are pleading for the community and for everyone's help that this person would be caught. And there's so much crime and violence here, and if we could just get hold to it and stop the killing, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hill, Ms. Fortune. Colleagues, on December 26, 2007, a day after Christmas, at 1:40 PM, Jeremy Solomon was fatally shot and killed while seated in the passenger seat of his friend's parked vehicle. He and his friend were parked in a lot located at 9637 Southwestern, when the unknown suspect suddenly, without provocation, removed a handgun from his pocket and shot Solomon and his friend. Solomon was transported to the California Hospital, where he was pronounced dead. LAPD detectives, Detective Eric Crossen from South Bureau Homicide is handling the case at 213-485-1383, and we're asking for any community involvement to locate those responsible for this case. I'd also like to make a verbal amendment on the motion that we didn't pick up initially, that because of the homicide of Jeremy Solomon, but also the serious injury caused by the gunshot to his friend, the reward should be $75,000 versus $50,000. So we ask for that verbal amendment, but also ask for community support to call 77th or South Bureau detectives at 485-1383, if anyone has any information on this case. So I'd move on number 18, that we get a unanimous vote and increase the reward to the appropriate level.
Thank you. Nobody else wishes to be heard? We'll go ahead and take a vote on those measures. Please prepare the roll. So we take them together. Do you want to?
Okay, let me just do 17. On Sunday, February 5, 2006, Marvin Powell was shot to death as he was riding his bicycle in the area of West 48th Street and South Butlawn by an unidentified suspect. After a thorough and exhaustive investigation, LAPD has been unable to identify the involved suspects. What we'd ask for, anyone with information, would call Detective Mendoza, 77th Street Homicide, at 485-1355, to assist in bringing this case to conclusion. This is a $50,000 reward for the apprehension of those involved in the homicide of Marvin Powell, occurred on Sunday, February 5, 2006.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on both of those, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item 22 called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon, item Mr. Alacon, item 22 is before us.
Members, this is a small item that recognizes that nationally, we recognize Spain Neuter Day. So we just passed out of this council the strongest Spain Neuter ordinance in the country, I believe, and this, on February 24, we would like to officially recognize it as Spain Neuter Day in LA, even though the national day, I believe, is on the 24th as well. But I think this is an opportunity for us to put the ordinance that I know the mayor will sign into action as quickly as possible. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, Mr. Alacon, is this still the four-month thing, or the concept of Spain neutering?
Well, this, I'm not going to go there. This is the concept of Spain and neutering.
Okay. On the concept that I totally support, I don't believe, obviously, in mandatory Spain neutering, and I don't believe four months is an adequate age, but if it's the concept of taking these stray dogs and cats and making sure that they are fixed, so we don't continue to kill them in animal shelters, it makes sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes. Thank you. That item's been approved. Yes, Mr. Alacon.
I'd like to mention that on February 26 at City Hall, we're going to have free Spain neutering and vaccinations and microchipping, should Mr. Rosendahl care to bring an animal to that event, well over six months, I'm sure. But we're teaming up with the mayor's office, Animal Services, the Amanda Foundation, and Petco, to provide free Spain neutering vaccinations and microchipping. The appointments start at 7:30, so please call the Amanda Foundation to book an appointment at 888-349-7388.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 23 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. I was joined by Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine, and Ms. Perry last week, or two weeks ago, when thousands of Angelenos, hundreds of thousands of Angelenos, went to the polls to exercise their right to vote. Unfortunately, what we have heard from that day is many of those votes will not count. Voters who are not registered in a political party, as we know, can choose to vote in a primary for Democratic or American Independent Presidential candidate. However, there was an additional box, it's been called Bubble Trouble, or Double Bubble Trouble, that was at the top of the ballot, which they had to check before choosing the candidate that they wanted to vote for. It was actually a three-step process. They had to ask their poll workers for a Democratic ballot or an American Independent ballot, then they had to vote for who they wanted for president. But just above that, and many poll workers, unfortunately, not to any fault of their own, were not informed very well by the county that that was necessary, and you had to also mark another bubble, saying, "I am a decline to state voter, voting in one of these categories," or else their votes would not be counted. If they did not check this box, their vote did not count. It would be a shame if what's estimated to be somewhere about 90,000 votes, can you imagine that, one of our council districts, when we're up for election, that's probably more than vote in any of our council elections, but with the exception of Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith. We have 90-plus thousand votes that will go uncounted, and what we've been told by the county registrar recorder is, right now, they have no way to account for that. The Courage Campaign, the NAACP, the League of Women Voters, Common Cause, Southwest Voter Project, CAWS, and many other folks joined us that day on the steps of City Hall, demanding that those votes be counted, and let's get rid of that bubble once and for all. We need to make voting easy for people. I personally believe that folks should be able to vote in all those primaries, whether it's Democrat, Republican, American Independent, or otherwise, but that's up to each party to decide. But though we may support different candidates, and we had folks that are voting for at least three different candidates as a part of that press conference, we are all united in ensuring that every Angeleno who went to the polls had their vote counted. This has made huge national news, folks. This is not Florida 2000, this is Los Angeles 2008, and we can and we must do better. So I ask for your support in the chorus that is joining to pressure the county to do all they can to vote or to account for those votes. We think that at least half of those decline-to-state voters will not be counted, because somebody didn't tell them. At my poll place, when I went at 4:00 PM and asked them, they said, "Oh, we didn't know we had to tell people that." So from that point on, they did, but nobody had been told before that. So I ask for your support. This is a critical issue in the most basic right we have to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Parks and Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, I want to thank our president for putting this motion in. We stood out there on the City Hall steps. It's outrageous, frankly. Here we are, the democracy, and yet we have these problems constantly. I can't believe it that people who didn't punch the bubble aren't being counted. There's at least 49,000, we've heard, the progressive Democrats met over the weekend. They just want to fire the guy who runs the thing. I don't think that's the solution. The solution, frankly, is why did we end up with a ballot like this, to begin with? And secondly, my God, can't we count these ballots that have already been cast? People obviously voted when they went down, but they weren't clear about it. I used to be a poll worker, folks, and I used to be in charge of the polls, and frankly, at the poll itself is when the bottom line, the rubber hits the road. That's when a poll worker should be able to explain it to somebody, either proactively or when a question is raised, and I heard many of the poll workers were unclear themselves as to exactly what should be done. It's a big deal, and I appreciate this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to Eric for putting this forward. I think one of the things that we saw, and it probably got most attention, is in Florida, where people went in and voted at Hanging Chad several years ago. And what I think has been important in the city of LA is that we have put some little extra money in the city clerk's office. We've recently raised the stipend for those who work the polls, and we've really emphasized more training. I think it's one of those things in talking to the general public, that voting is such a precious right, that it's just not the day that you show up and push the button. What's important is probably a five-step process, is that you're studying the issues, you know the date of the vote, you clearly have to know how the machine works, otherwise all of that effort on that day comes for naught. And so I would just ask, as a, and I realize it's a little step different than the motion, but just ask our city clerk to pay particular attention to the outcome of this motion and what's going on in the county, to ensure that whatever we can learn from this process is incorporated into our election process, so that we can learn from it and not have any similar incidents occur in our future elections. And so I'd ask that that be a direction to the city clerk, to monitor this motion and also the process of whatever the ultimate outcome for the county, to ensure that we can take advantage of that learning exercise.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, followed, Mr. Cardenas.
I'd just like to thank my colleagues for bringing this motion forward, this resolution forward. I think it's important for us to understand that every time something like this happens, we all have to remind the voters that we respect their vote, we appreciate their vote, and we want to thank them for getting out there in record numbers. But one of the things I'd like to make sure that people understand, that the city of Los Angeles has its own voting system, the county of Los Angeles has its own voting system. And one thing I'd like to point out, as a former legislator myself, unfortunately, the state of California and the county of Los Angeles, the most populated county in the country, is the county of Los Angeles. And for many, many years, that department has not been given the funds and the wherewithal and the ability to move forward and progress the way they should in order to do the job right. So one of the things that I think is important for us to understand is, we need to demand of our policymakers at every level of government to make sure that just because this isn't the kind of sexy issue that people are worried about in their everyday lives, it's on a day like this that people start to realize that when we fail as policymakers, things like this happen. And unfortunately, when you have departments that are underfunded, like the county department registrar in the county of Los Angeles, again, the most populated county in the country, whenever you make a little mistake, it is magnified tremendously. And it's important for us to understand that we, not only as voters, but as citizens, need to demand that government put the money where it belongs, that government pay attention to these important issues, so that mistakes like this don't happen. Once again, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Garcetti, Rosendahl, Zine, Gruel, for signing off on this resolution. It's really important that people understand, just because this wasn't our fault, it wasn't the city of Los Angeles' fault, this is something that we need to defend, this is something we need to remind people, that we respect your vote, we appreciate the fact that you got off of your couch, you got out of your car, what have you, and you went out and voted. This was a record number of people who voted. It's important for us to count every vote, and it's also important for us to get it right, so this doesn't happen again. So this issue should not go away. This is something we should continue to work at, not just talk about, in making sure that this mistake does not occur again.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just rise to support this effort. Anybody who was a Democrat did not have a problem. Is that correct?
Yeah, they don't have to do the vote.
Right. Anybody who was a Republican didn't have an option. But I think the parties, and I know it was just last few days, I heard the loud Kerry and call. I'm a Democrat, but the Kerry call for all people to vote. I would like to ask the VAC to draft me a motion, because I think in all this discussion here, I think we should have an elections commission and maybe separate some of the Ethics Commission business to Elections Commission, so we do drive more people to the polls to participate in the process. So if VAC, if you did come up with a motion to explore the feasibility of creating an election commission to enhance our people's vote. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just a brief point of information, too, Mr. Labange. You'll be curious to know, there's a whole package that we had in what was then Rules and Elections, now Rules and Government Committee, of all the suggestions different council members have made on voter turnout. Ms. Hahn has a couple motions, Mr. Weezer had some, and that's coming back to us from the city clerk's office soon, so that package should be there.
I'll throw mine in there, too.
All right. Sounds good. No double-bubble trouble.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and I'm pleased to have joined with my colleagues on this issue. I think it does bring to light, as well, the importance of us having poll workers and those locations, and I know that that has been something the city clerk and all of us have been concerned about, as we see the number of poll workers diminishing even in our city elections, and the importance of poll workers who have been given the training for new changes. So we look forward to that. I know it continues to come through your committee to ensure that effectiveness and participation. So with that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes. Thank you. Next item?
Item 40 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a good one, folks, that you can all be proud of yourselves on. Has to do with taking a piece of paper and putting stuff on both sides of it. You know, it seems kind of simple, but it is a big deal. We can cut the use of paper in half. Please tell us what we've done so far with this motion. Tell us the good news.
Well, first of all, thank you, Councilmen, for your support on this motion, and all of you, actually, for all of your support. We've done a number of things. First, in conjunction with GSD, we've been replacing a lot of the network printers with multifunction printers, their printers, copiers, fax machines, et cetera. And while we're doing that, we're also changing it to be from just printing on one side to printing on both sides of the paper. So that is a big accomplishment, plus the fact, I would say, approximately 80% of those machines have been rolled out, and they certainly have been rolled out to all of your council offices as well, and they have all been set for duplex printing. Second of all, we're doing sort of a paradigm shift in the city, in that we really, up till now, have been printing every, you know, type of report that everybody wants. What we're doing now is suppressing that, and we're making reports available online so that people can view them and then decide whether or not they actually want to even print them. So I would say, so far, we've suppressed 18 million lines of printing, which is probably approximately 15% of all of our printing that we do. The next big leap that we're going to take is, we're going to be reducing, actually, for the most part, eliminating printing of direct deposit slips. That will be available online for people to print out at their leisure, and those are quite costly, because they're special forms, and then we'll be moving on to the same thing for W2s. So in essence, we're getting ourselves out of the printing business, which I think is a good thing.
When you said at least 15%, I mean, just think of the savings. If you could guestimate right now, what kind of monies are we saving? We're in a budget crisis, Mr. Parks so aptly notes and is dealing with it. Will this give us a nickel or a dime? Will we save 100 grand? What kind of money are we going to save when we do a total both sides of the paper? I mean, just looking at the paper here, it seems like a no-brainer. If we did both sides of it, it could cut it in half. What kind of savings are we thinking we're going to realize?
Well, we're working on that. I don't have those figures with me right now. GSD has been tracking all of that for us, so what I will do is get that to the council as soon as possible.
And these machines, you said 80% are now in use. So any council office can just do it that way. Have we talked about it, the mayor's office using it, too?
Yes, yes.
Great, great. So all of the city is finding itself. Will it filter itself to all the departments and all of us?
Yes, and that's where you can all come into play and just encourage the other departments to work with us and move forward in saving paper and implementing all of these machines.
The next is this recycling paper versus regular paper. Some people have a problem with the concept of it. Explain how that works, and can the city, going forward, purchase all of its paper as recycled paper?
There are certain equipment that, for some reason, does not do well with recycled paper, for whatever reason, but the majority of the machines, the newer ones, all do fine with recycled paper. So, you know, we still will have some that won't be recycled, but the majority will be.
And where is the city in its purchasing of paper, buying only recycled paper? Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know. That's something GSD is going to have to answer, since they purchase all the paper. I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, Mr. Garcetti's excited to get on that one, but if we don't have that motion in place, we certainly want to make sure that the city, going forward, buys only recycled paper. Okay, and the next element, because this will save us literally tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of dollars, okay? We know that. We know we don't have to cut down as many forests as we used to. We need the lungs for the air and our climate change. How about getting this more excitedly introduced into the private sector? Where are we with that concept, and can we find ourselves urging the private sector to buy all their copier machines and all their equipment to do both sides?
I think we're pretty much in lockstep with private sector. They're, you know, in some cases, ahead of us in this area. I think we're a little behind.
Ah, well, I'm glad to hear that as well. Well, thank you so much for giving us an update. When you come back next time, especially Mr. Parks and I are going to want to hear, and Greg Smith, and Wendy Gruel, and Jose Weezer, and the others of us on the Budget Committee, as well as all of my colleagues, obviously, of the savings that we're making as a city.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Rosendahl, I remember from the first days that you've been here, you've really led the charge on this. You've helped us get recycling at the airports, which I know a number of us wanted to make sure all those papers and cans and bottles that are at the airport were there. I'm actually not introducing something. I was going to refer to Mr. Smith's motion from just earlier in the meeting. What we passed today, which Mr. Smith has been working on, and we've been pleased to join with him on, is the preferential purchasing policy for all products in this city, that you have to have the most environmentally greenest product you can find in all categories, from recycled paper to the toner we use, to the types of cars we purchase. So that is now across the board in all of our departments throughout the entire city. It's going to be millions and millions of dollars of savings and good for our economy as well. The double-sided printing is so critical. We've worked with ITA for years. And here, we didn't have double-sided printing on our agendas, on our CLA reports, on our CAO reports, till about four years ago, which was amazing. We didn't have recycling in city council till your predecessor, Ms. Galanter, who was hand-recycling for all the council members before any of us were here, got that there. But one other thing that I'd like us to move towards, just for the council, one, maybe we'll test it by giving people the options, because I know some people like the feel of paper, but think of the paper flow we have right in front of us. We should be able to do electronic notebooks of everything that we're getting. Can you imagine if somebody submits a motion, it goes in there, and you have it on your laptop right here? You come in instead of with a notebook full of stuff every single day, you just have your notebook right here, as people can do online today with a council file, see the CLA report, see the CAO report, see the departmental report, et cetera, and we would reduce paper altogether. And what Denmark did, which saved them about 60 million euros, now about $120 million a year, $100 million a year, was they passed a electronic bill of rights within all their government departments, so that if you're a department that wants to go green, you can actually refuse correspondence that comes by paper. And maybe we should be looking at that here in the city. I think when we did our environmental day, we might have put a motion, and we'll check on that, but that essentially, we could... on that, but that essentially, we could, our receptionists could say, "We refuse to take in this paper that's arrived today. We want that to come electronically." It's easier, it's faster, it saves us money because people don't have to walk to each one of our offices, and we don't have this big stack of paper that we're going through. I was in committee today, to give you an example, Energy and Environment Committee, ironically, and there was a contract for our DWP computer program to track and model our electrical system. I got two reports this thick. They were duplicate of each other, one handed to me by the clerk and one that was already in my notebook because it had been delivered. It was like two hundred pieces of paper. I flipped through it quickly. Most of those papers will never have a single word read on them, and they're being recycled right now in my office. So I really praise you for this. I think we can do a lot, and I want to thank you, Randy, because I know this has been a big priority of yours coming in, because in this budget year, it's too critical not to do it, but for our environment, we have to do it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just a question. Do you know how much money the city recovers from recycling of city buildings? These are the cans that are right here, the green and yellow?
No, I don't. Just GSD.
I understand, but I think you should know, too, because you're in charge of it. I mean, I believe it's not a division anymore in this city. We all got to think of each other. With that being said, I don't want to take away from what Mr. Rosendahl said or Mr. Garcetti, but not everybody is paperless. People sometimes really need to see an agenda, really need to see the notes, really need to see the writings of what's there. So what's appropriate, I think, is real important. We still have transformations. Not everybody's available to the skills of a hen pilot.
Raspberry.
Raspberry, blueberry, appleberry.
It's black this week.
Yeah, whatever it is, and has that. So I think it's real important just to remember that as we do that transformation. Are we doing less? What did we do before? Also, I would say this, to be real successful, we say, "No report for the CAO," or the CLA should be more than three pages. I think that would be agreeable to the CLA and CAO in the sense of trying to do things in that effect. And lastly, I just wanted to say, I only wish this was on cable TV as well as satellite TV. Could you figure out how to get it on cable TV, too?
It's on Time Warner Cable. We're discussing this now with AT&amp;T Cable and some of the others.
Who wants satellite? Satellite?
We've talked to DirecTV.
How many people in Los Angeles have satellite TV?
About as many as have cable.
How many have cable, you know?
I don't remember the exact amount.
All right, I'd like to know. So give me a call. Give me the numbers. There's four million people in the city. Just give me the numbers sometime, and I'd appreciate that. One point six million people have cable TV? No, that's forty percent, but I think we should get real numbers. If people do advertising, know the real numbers. Thank you very much for this recycling.
Seven hundred thousand.
Have satellite?
Cable.
And how many have satellite?
It's about the same.
Getting close to that.
The number was seven hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not sure everyone heard, Ms. Rosendahl, in that remark.
All right, but I'm sure there's some marketing on that. Thank you for this effort here, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to continue to be a model for the country and as a business, and we get some of our private sector to join in with us. That would be great, and that may be our next effort, which is to try to get them to adopt some of the things we hear in the city of Los Angeles. With that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That's been approved. Thank you very much. Nice to see you, Randy. Next item?
Item forty-one, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this is an item that certainly has been talked about for a number of years, of finding a way in which the multitude of security personnel are trained or at least administered more closely aligned with Post as opposed to its current configuration and consumer affairs. It was highlighted specifically after September eleventh, and we have done some things in the city of L.A. that have mandated large buildings to have certain numbers and types of security so that they're available to accept and also to the responding, the first responders. And so this is the first effort of probably about a five-year effort to begin looking at ways that we, as a city, can take the lead, as we did with Post. And many of you may not be aware that Ed Davis, through his effort, actually created Post in the state of California, and it's now, every state in the Union has it. But with four times the number of security officers in the state compared to police officers, there's more of a understanding of the importance of security and also the importance of professionalizing them. Many security companies that are state, county, and city-run do not require, or within these geographic boundaries, do not require any training beyond what the state currently mandates. The city of Los Angeles, with its security forces and its RFPs, mandates significantly more training within the city than any other city in the state. But it's our hope that, and we have a couple of legislators that are looking to move forward on legislation to support this, that we start a process to look at a way in which the training, the requirements, the standardization, the professionalism for security officers come under the umbrella of the larger issue of Post, who have a world-renowned record of addressing issues of training on police officers. The caveats that came out of the, from the original motion to the committee, was that we want to look at where currently there's only forty hours of training for security officers, where within police officers is up to six hundred and sixty-four, that there's got to be a happy medium between those two barometers to ensure that there's more training, that we're also aware that Post is funded through special funds dealing with fines from arrests made by police officers. There's certainly going to be a need for financial or funding sources to be identified for this new activity. And then also, we cannot ignore the thirty-nine current academies that basically teach Post-related training, that they can't absorb this kind of training without either some financial support, or that they identify security officer-specific schools that can carry that on. The effort is that, our belief is that if we find ways to standardize and professionalize the whole involvement of security in the state, it will then drive the benefits and salaries, as we've heard so much in the last several years, about the three hundred percent turnover in security officer function, mainly because of lack of benefits and salary. It's my belief that if we set the standards, we certainly will get better qualified people, which then will drive the whole issue of benefits and salary down the line, and so I'd ask for an aye vote, and appreciate the committee moving forward on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and thank you for your good work on that. It was passed out of committee unanimously, so with that, let's go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item fifty-two, called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Sacks, item fifty-two is before us. Forthwith without objection on that.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I would really like to get some kind of clearance or explanation on exactly what happens with these motions, if it's possible. I don't know if you'll do it now or later. But on the twenty-ninth of January, you made a, you had a motion on your agenda to accept bids, and the bid in question was for a business improvement district for a pipeline franchise. On the thirteenth, you awarded the franchise to Volpak Terminal Los Angeles in this particular agenda item. And now again, you're, on today's agenda, you're ratifying the San Pedro Merchant-Based Business Improvement District, or BID. How can you have business improvement districts for pipelines? What's the, and you have bidding, open bidding on them, and yet you have a business improvement district for San Pedro, and there's no bidding on this item, amongst some of the questions? The other part of the question is, if you're opening bidding for the pipeline franchise, what was the amount of the bid, the winning bid for the franchise?
Mr. President, this is not involving a pipeline franchise. This is a bid. This is about the San Pedro Business Improvement District.
I understand, but the same.
If you could keep it to that.
Same general language is used. BID is a BID.
There's common language that's used at a bidding process as opposed to a business improvement district, but this is a specific one about San Pedro, so.
That's what I'm asking.
I know the city attorney spent some time with you on the previous issue, after you came to the Rules and Government Committee and explained that part to you. So if that explanation was not adequate, I'm not sure we can give you any more information than that, but we've tried our very hardest. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate your comments. If we can open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we'll go out to San Fernando Valley. Donna Perman. After that, will be Mr. Sacks.
First of all, I wanted to say, I called number twenty-three special, but I wanted to say that it was not right to make the ballot so confused for absentee, didn't get the vote, or who they wanted to vote for. But anyway, here we are on special events on Friday and special events on Tuesday. The ones that really stand out are, that's Tuesday, you had four events where you had to upfront the money and have the events pay them back, and whether they paid them back is another story. That's not good. And these Tuesday events, that Wilmington Certified Farmer's Market for thirty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, that's outrageous. And the Warren Chapel CME Church Block Party on February twenty-third, why couldn't the church members pay for this event? Shouldn't there be a separation of church and state? Why should everyone in the city have to pay for these events that they don't go to? Legal Mark Association Reception, two thousand three hundred and ten, and again, we have these events for, shall reimburse the cities. BB's Fashion Show, pre-Oscar, Ebony Magazine, Global Green Event, pre-Grammy Verizon Event. Certainly, these people have these money to hold these events themselves. Certainly, we don't need to take it from the city, along with InStyle Event, Chapin Event, Project Ethos Event, Fonda Event. I don't see the necessity for the city paying for all these events when our city is in such trouble. Most Angelitos don't even know or go to these events, says we have to pay for them. I still believe the councilmen should pay out of their pocket for every event you make up. Bet, I believe me, you would stop all these, you would put a moratorium yourself if you had to pay for it. And I want to stop the street closures like the farmer's market. Certainly, I, certainly, those people who go to these events should pay for, they get enough money for these events. Why do we have, closing these streets? How much does this cost, and why do we have to inconvenience people closing streets? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. And just to clarify for the folks that are listening and for you as well, we do not put cash up for the events. This is merely for traffic officers, street services, et cetera, and then they reimburse the cost of those people who are already on staff there, to make sure that no taxpayer money is used. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker on this one.
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, on the Wilmington Certified Farmer's Market, just some clarification. It says it's scheduled from February twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, to February twenty-sixth, two thousand and nine. I'm sure that's a weekly farmer's market. What day would that be held? What are the hours? Will that be on the banner? And the safety implementation, will there be barriers to prevent any kind of repeat of what happened at Santa Monica, just to be on the safe side? So could that, is that what's language? The language on the banner, would that include the day of the farmer's market and the hours? Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment. On fifty-six, we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. And Mr. Zine, for a quick introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like our colleagues and the public to know that we are being visited by United States Department of Justice, U.S. Marshal Service. United States Marshal Tony Amador covers the Eastern District, former LAPD, and now he's a U.S. Marshal, taking care of the Eastern District of California. Tony Amador.
Thank you very much, Marshal Amador. Good to have you here. Next item, please.
Item fifty-seven, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, Donna Perman. Item fifty-seven is before us. After that, we'll go to sixty-one.
Again, you have more waiver policies for a humanitarian day conference. Yeah, well, if you look at it, it doesn't make any sense. Sharon Brewer pointed it out to me, that it's, says, "Middle and high school students on array of science projects." I don't know what has, much really has to do with humanitarian day. So anyway, we don't need any more of these exemptions. Certainly, people, certainly LAUSD, if this is a science project, can come up. And if you have any other things, certainly, people who go to the convention centers can pay for this. The city can't afford it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. That is the last speaker on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item sixty-one, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, Mr. Matt Dowd, are you here on item sixty-one? If not, Mr. Jimenez, Juan Jimenez?
Yes, I was born and raised in Boyle Heights, and for sixty-five years, I know Boyle Heights by the palm of my hand. The vendors, I'm not sure if they're addressing this as the public street vendors or not. I need to have clarification on this.
We'll see if we can get somebody from the council district to let you know. Any other comments, sir?
No, I, the reason why is because there's a story of street vendors that the nuns are saying, but at the same time, there was, back years ago, there was a lady selling food out of her baby buggy, and later on purchased, not purchased, but rented a place, and as time went by, she ended up buying the building, and it's a very known restaurant in Boyle Heights, known as La Flautas. So what it is, is we need to establish some kind of a vehicle to educate these vendors to become taxpayers and to contribute some money towards our city. But until that is established, all you're doing is penalizing people and then forcing them to go towards crime. I think that we need to do a vehicle to educate them and to come forward and also get a designated area for them. I am willing to voluntarily work with you. This is an effect that goes across the board from all the city council districts. So I know that I have a plan out there that can work and educate them and become productive vendors and also legal vendors, because all the vendors come out when City Hall closes and all the city license departments are closed and all the night thing is being done. So, you know, it's sad that our elected officials haven't taken into, looked into this very serious matter. So I hope that you not pass something without researching it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. I know we've done a lot on vending from MacArthur Park, and Mr. Reyes has experienced it now over in CD-14, so we'll make sure I see the council office is already connected with you. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to leave at eleven fifteen on Friday, February twenty-ninth, for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, that takes us down to how many?
Down to eleven.
Down to eleven. Okay. I will make the motion, Ms. Grohl second, and he is excused.
Councilmember Grohl requests to be excused to arrive at ten thirty on Wednesday, February twentieth, for city business. A motion is required.
Okay. I know we have some important items. We'll grant that excuse. I'll make the motion, Ms. Grohl, but Mr. Labonge and Ms. Grohl, we need to probably talk about just attendance on that day, since we have some ordinances on Wednesday, tomorrow? Okay, so we'll discuss that. The next item?
Councilmembers Zine, request to be excused March twenty-eighth and April eighteenth for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he is excused?
That clears desk.
Okay. Any business announcements, folks? Yes, Mr. Labonge?
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask you to send a communication to all city departments for the great effort they made in the tribute to Officer Randy Simmons, or not only the Los Angeles Police Department, their fellow officer, but the Fire Department, Public Los Angeles Police Department, their fellow officer, but the Fire Department, Public Works Department, and especially the Transportation Department, which closed Vermont Avenue and Slauson for the procession to Holy Cross Cemetery. It was a tremendous event and outpouring of love for a great police officer. And the church and everything else, but I was separating church and state, Ms. Ha, but you could add the church and state, you know, and that's good. God bless. I said, "God bless all who participated." Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I could ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions, please. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is a sadness that we acknowledge the life of Ann Sumner, a remarkable Bruin pioneer. She passed away at her home Saturday morning, February 9th, 2008. She was 103. She had a love affair, which I think is really a description with the campus and UCLA that lasted 86 years. From the moment she first enrolled at UCLA's Vermont Avenue Campus in 1922 until the day she died, she was inextricably linked to UCLA. In fact, the loyal Bruin made her home on Westholme Avenue, just north of Sorority Road, to ensure that she stayed in close proximity to the campus she loved so well. She began her remarkable accomplishments in relation to the fledging campus, began when she was just a teenager, and as a junior writer for the Los Angeles Evening Express. She became friends with Regent Edward A. Dickinson, Dixon, excuse me, who owned the paper, and his wife, Wilhelmina, who treated her like a member of the family. Dixon, of course, was the impetus behind the creation of the Southern Branch of the University of California later to become UCLA. She was, during her time, she wrote eight romance novels, which ran serially in more than 20 U.S. newspapers, six of which were published in book form. In 1932, she was appointed by Ernest Carroll Moore, the head of the Southern Branch, to UCLA's brand-new news bureau, and moved into the newly-created job of chief publicist for the university extension in 1939. She was involved in a number of extraordinary activities, including she was a member, the founding member of the Gold Shield Alumni of UCLA in 1936. She was a member of the Alumni Association Affiliates, founding member of the Friends of the UCLA Library, received numerous awards, and an endowment was established by Ann Sumner with Gold Shield that provides funds to purchase life memberships in the UCLA Alumni Association to graduating scholars. She was named Writers Digest Best Dressed Woman in the Newspaper Business in 1930, and she never went out without being impeccably dressed, from her white gloves and pearls to her stylish suits and hats. A fine morning walk, she would say, is past the Faculty Center to pick up a copy of the Bruin, Daily Bruin, and north to the Commons for a cappuccino, past the Sculpture Garden and south to Inverted Fountain, thus passing halls memorialized to Dodd, Powell, Bunch, Campbell, Dixon, and Newson. She knew them all. So she was a really extraordinary woman, and her services were held on February 12th at St. Albemarle Episcopal Church. She's survived by her niece, Mary Ann Newson, but she was quite a woman. I had the pleasure of knowing her, and her life to 103 years old was lived a very, very full life. So we ask that we acknowledge her life and her passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ha?
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Christian Dwayne Rogers, who passed away in a tragic car accident earlier this month. He is the son of Sharon Olivito and stepson of Sam Olivito, who many of us know through the Contract Cities Association. He was raised in Downey and graduated from Downey High School. He worked in the construction and the food and beverage industry. He's survived by his daughter, Marissa, and son, Christian Jr., as well as his father, Dwayne Rogers. I'd also like us to adjourn in the memory of a wonderful woman who died way too young. We just adjourned in a woman who lived a full life. This woman died way too young. Juliana Monte Denby passed away suddenly on February 9th. She was only 53 years old. She was a third-grade teacher at Barton Hill Elementary School in San Pedro, and the love for her students was incredible. After the long service for our wonderful officer, Randy Simmons, I then went to San Pedro for Julie's service. And the outpouring at that service was very similar in terms of the lives that she touched, the students who actually got up and spoke, the parents who said, you know, if they could have had the perfect teacher for their child, Julie would have been the one that they had asked for. She just had so much love of life and spirit. She was taking dancing lessons at the Elks Club on Wednesday night when she suddenly had an aneurysm and then never regained consciousness. But we will really miss her. She's survived by her son, Eric, her mother, Esther, who is a great community activist that I've worked with on a couple of issues in San Pedro, her wonderful sister, she had three sisters, Kathy, Charlotte, and Lorninda, and her companion, Alex Palumbo. And I felt like Friday, you know, we, the City of Los Angeles, laid to rest two great people, you know, a police officer and a teacher. And I think our society in no way is less, or has, is mourned any less when we lose a teacher, a good teacher, because I think many of us could probably count on our hand, on one hand, maybe, the great teachers that we had in our life. So it's really a shame that we lost Julie so early, but the lives she touched are great and varied. We're going to miss her.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Joined in on the, on that, and by the way, he passed away in a motorcycle crash, Sam's son. I have three adjourning motions. First is Max J. Sass, 91 years of age, born February 15th in the Ukraine, resident in Woodland Hills for many years, graduated from University of Denver, undertook postgraduate studies at Colorado State University, owner of Burbank Surplus and Western Wear Store in Burbank, was an officer of the Burbank Golden Mall Association, was active in the Associated Surplus Dealers, and also a lifelong Mason and Shriner. Max and his wife Pearl were active members of Valley Best Shalom and Encino. He was honored as Man of the Year by the National Federation of Jewish Men's Club, was a great man, will be dearly missed by all his family and friends. Max J. Sass, may he rest in peace. Yvonne Funches began her career, passed away February 9th, began her career in 1979 with LA City, joined the Department of Animal Services on August 27, 1981, was dedicated and care and employee her entire career, worked at nearly all of our animal care and control centers. She was laid to rest on February 16th, be deeply missed by her family and friends. May she rest in peace. And finally, a member of the LAPD, passed away, Daniel Bryan Moran, passed away February 12th, born April 4, 1944 in Los Angeles, known as Dan the Man to his partners, spent 41 years serving the community as a Los Angeles police officer. 1978, married Landon, his best friend and love of his life, great man and an extraordinary loving father, survived by his wife, daughter Jennifer, son Brian, and numerous family members and close friends. Daniel Bryan Moran, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And finally, colleagues, I ask you to join me in adjourning for a friend who died this last week. Mancha Lapan was assassinated on Valentine's Day, somebody who I spent two years of my life with off and on in Burma. He was the leader of the Karren National Union. The Karren are the largest ethnic minority in the country of Burma. And Mancha, who was born in 1940, sorry, 1943, became the leader of the Karren National Union in 2000, and the head of the National Council of the Union of Burma, which is the main opposition group, unified a lot of the ethnic minority groups with the monks and the students and the democratic resistance. We hear a lot about Nobel Peace Prize winner Daohng San Suu Kyi, who remains under house arrest. Lesser-known are some of the rebels who have literally been fighting for 60 years against the most oppressive government on the face of the earth. The Karren have seen their villages burned, their women raped, their children forced into conscripted labor. Mancha was an amazing, amazing man, somebody who influenced the course of my life quite a bit. He was somebody who brought together all the different warring factions across the Burmese opposition. Two men came to his house on Valentine's Day and, while sitting on his veranda, greeted him and then pulled guns out and killed him. He's survived by a son and two daughters, but his legacy from the mid-'60s, when he first joined the opposition movement, to now when he was the leader of the Karren National Union and the opposition, he has saved countless lives, continued to keep the fires burning for democracy in Burma, and certainly that vision and that mission will not be forgotten. Mancha Lapan, rest in peace. All members, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next meet tomorrow, February 20th, Wednesday, here in City Council chambers. Until then, we will see you. This council is adjourned.